And the consent calendar consists of two items. The council meeting minutes for December 5th and the council work session minutes for December 5th.
Make motion to move it?
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. And that comes to my report. This has been a little, thank goodness, slower than usual since the last meeting. I attended the YMCA auction. That was a really good event. Quite a few people were there. Looked like they raised quite a bit of money as they have the last couple of years. Thanks to Scott sponsoring the table with that. And then, the other thing I participated in was the Monmouth Independence Christmas Project, which is a project where they gather food for people who are in need, and I was able to help deliver. And I believe we probably got somewhere between about 150 and 200 families received food for that project. And then, I'd like to make an appointment to the Historic Commission of Bob Edgar. And do I have?
I have approval of Bob.
Seconded.
Historic Commission.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the other thing that I want to remind councilors of, the Cog Dinner is coming up January 31st, and this one, they definitely need reservations. In the past years, we've been able to go just walk up to the door. This time, they're need reservations ahead of time. So if you're gonna attend that, if you could let those know, it'd be appreciated. It's gonna be out of grand wrong. And that brings us to the council reports. Councilor Silvernagle?
Great, thank you. The Monmouth Senior Advisory Board met on December 19th. That was Barbara Hogan's first regular meeting with the group. They're getting ready to do, when the weather permits anyhow, they're gonna have the ramps out to the sidewalks down there to finish off that part of the project. So those are, whenever the weather cooperates and get the contractor there, they'll do those. Barbara had some, one of the things, she was only six days into her job at this point, and one of the questions that one of the advisory board had asked her was, you know, what were her ideas were. And I thought she had, for being six days in, there were some really good ideas. So she wanted to really get involved in the committees. She had a few visual changes she wanted to make that she could see already. She was finding ways to bring in the younger seniors, so like the 55-year-olds kind. And then she was looking for an appropriate balance, she said, between, you know, with technology and that kind of thing, to not alienate either end. So I thought for only being six days in, those were some pretty good observations and ideas that she had. The Meals on Wheels will be on Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Center, and that started actually today, the 2nd, January 2nd. And that concludes the highlights of my report.
Thanks.
Counselor Dunson?
Yeah, I have planning, and historic, a planning, I couldn't come because he had a, it was a general, anyhow, on historic, we had, this was actually soon as first time at the meetings, and she'd just come on board, trying to get things going. On historic, and this was on December 6th. We talked a lot about the railroads in the area, Pope County Museum, pictures, how we can make that better, to get more pictures digital in our system, is what we're trying to do, so that we can have something to carry on after people leave here and see what really happened in the town. Walking tour signage, we're gonna work on that harder this spring, and that's the ones where we try to get more of the signs in the buildings to say what they were, if they're station number seven, station number 10, whatever it is, because that's in our phone apps. When you go into phone apps, it has a different stations. And try to get those in, and be ready for the May historic month, and that's our week here, too. We're looking at certified local government grant applications that I think have been by 1st of February, so I'm hoping that maybe tomorrow night, we'll find out how many of those we were able to apply for. They're small, they're not large grants, they're small, but still, they help pay for things like our banner that goes out here, part of the signage was part of the problem. It also helped us in our, getting our houses inventories in the town, and the last thing was the walking app. So anyhow, they're small, but they still contribute to what we have. And we're trying to work towards the, like I say, the Historic Preservation Month, which is May, and see if we can get a little more people turnout for it than we had last year. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Sharma?
The Tree Board won't meet until the 18th of this month.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Carey?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the MyNet board meeting, MyNet board did not meet during the month of December. We are working on some fine-tuning, some possible business opportunities that we've had some discussion about, and those will, as they become fleshed out, will become more of a, more of a topic. We just haven't been able to get to it with holidays and everything else. We do plan to meet once and perhaps even twice during the month of January to kind of get caught up on things. I would note, and I received in the mail today, as many MyNet subscribers did, the notice of the addition of a new franchise fee charge for data. And, you know, and this is the form, and if you're a MyNet customer, you will receive it if you haven't. And I'd like to just clarify a little bit on it. I don't know that it's quite as clear as it might be. We have always charged telephone, franchise fees for telephone and cable, so there's no change in any of that. This is a new charge for data only. And I think one of the things, and that was sort of a bleakly referenced, one of the other things is, it's more than just MyNet. In other words, all data providers will be charged the same amount, so, and it'll be new for, you know, for all of them, whether it's, you know, you go through the list. So just a bit of a clarification on that, and that will begin February 1st, so, just a bit of a clarification there. So I'll have more once we meet.
All right. Thanks. Any community announcements? Hearing none. We'll move on to the city manager's report.
Yeah, just a couple items. One, as you know, we're gonna be partnering on a homelessness initiative. That was initiated by Big Drivers of Marion County City of Salem, then Kaiser, Independence and Monmouth are now involved in the process. And I participated in the interviews for the coordinator position. We had some really good candidates, a diverse group. We've got a couple of good ones that could go with either one. The idea is to get that person in probably by the end of the month, get them going, and then the key thing there is to try to take all the pieces that people are doing with their private, nonprofit, you know, public agencies, and try to get the seams cut, and get that thing to work better for folks, so they'll come up with a plan and hopefully make some progress on the issue. But I've had a good process, and I think we'll get a good person. And then a second one, Janet, have audits for you, and she wanted to talk to you about that in a moment.
Yeah.
Before I, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and honorable councilmembers. Before I distribute them to you, I just wanted to give you a heads up that they're next to, or a week from Tuesday, next Tuesday, at the next council meeting, our new auditors, Kuntz, I wanna call him KPB because that's the acronym, but Kuntz Purdue Blasquez, will be coming and doing a presentation for you, a brief presentation about what their findings were with the audit. And generally, we did get an unmodified opinion, which is what we look for. We do have a, I will give you a heads up, there are what they're calling significant deficiencies. There's two significant deficiencies. Those are not material. They are simply items that we need to make some changes in the way that we're doing things, and I've already drafted our response to those. I think they are very easy things to fix, and so, but you'll see what they are. There's a letter included in here that you can see what those issues are. And then, beyond that, I was hoping that you could, at your leisure, review them, and I don't know if anyone has any leisure, but if you could review them and get any questions back to me by Friday the 12th, January the 12th, that would be much appreciated. So our auditors are kind of new to doing this presentation with you, and would like to have a little bit of a heads up on any questions you might have. You may still, if you bring questions to the meeting, that will be fine, we just may not be prepared with the details. So with that, I'll distribute the two reports to you. Yes, one is for the urban renewal agency. Yeah, unless there's any other questions you have.
Thank you.
Next meeting.
And that concludes your reports, huh? All right. So we'll move on to the business, oh, we're gonna move on to citizen comments. At this time, is reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Maximum of three minutes per item, please. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the business's agenda. And this would be a public hearing on a comprehensive plan map amendment 17-01. Do I declare it open now, or do I wait for?
Yes, that would be great.
So I declare the public hearing open.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to put that screen up so we can make sure we follow, so we don't want to talk in that time?
Well, the screen is part of the presentation right now.
Oh, okay. So you let us know if we're not, if we're not screening it.
We'll, we'll get you through it.
Okay. I think in a second for that slide to warm up. But yeah, we wanted to try a format where we display the approval criteria on the screen so you could see what the decision's based on, so should be loading up here in just a second. But I can go ahead and read the hearing statement. Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor, my name is Suzanne Deffra, City Development Director, here to present the staff report for comprehensive plan amendment. I first need to read a hearing statement, so bear with me, and ask, are there any declarations of conflict, bias, or expertise contact by members of the council that you'd like to declare regarding this application this evening?
I don't know if it's significant, but I can see the property from my kitchen window.
That's not, it's a small town, I imagine. Everyone knows exactly where the property is and what it looks like. Neither of them would get it whether you'd be willing to evaluate the criteria of the application based on your own investigation, but, but thanks.
Okay. Oregon Land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of each and every public hearing. The applicable substantive criteria upon which this case will be decided are found in the Monmouth City Code, Section 18.15.060. These criteria are addressed in the staff report. If we can get the projector warmed up here, they'll also be on the screen behind me. We do have a handout as a backup, just in case the technology doesn't come through. We just ask that all testimony, arguments, and evidence be directed toward these criteria or other criteria in the Monmouth Comprehensive Plan or zoning ordinance which you believe applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties to this hearing an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Any issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals shall be raised no later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing on the proposal before the city. Such issue shall be raised with and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties to this hearing an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval without sufficient specificity and allow the city or its design to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. So basically, what I've just read was, if you want to raise an issue that's going to be a basis of an appeal, it needs to be raised no later than this final hearing on the application on that issue, and that'll give the opportunity for the city and parties to respond to those issues. So in terms of the format of this, of the public hearing, the application will start with the, or the hearing will start with the staff report. Next, the applicants will be invited to present their case, followed by those who'd like to speak in support of the application. Then those opposed to the application speak, followed by persons either for or against the application. Public agencies are also allowed to comment, and we just ask that anybody speaking before the city council to please state your name and address for the record. Okay, so, as I mentioned, this is a public hearing for a comprehensive plan map amendment. It's case number 17-01. Their request is to change the comprehensive plan map designation from low-density residential to industrial. The property is approximately 5.57 acres in size, and it consists currently of two tax lots that the applicant is in the process of actually combining into one tax lot. The parcel is located outside the city limits, but it is inside the Monmouth Urban Growth Boundary. I actually have a map here with the parcel highlighted in red and blue underlined, so I can get my arrow here to point on it. So you can see it's, but it's about 200 feet of frontage on Pacific Highway 99W on the south part of town. This parcel just to the north is the current Mar Brothers bark dust business is located on that larger parcel to the north. The applicants are James and Penny Mar, and the reason for the request is that it facilitates an expansion of the current bark dust and firewood operation that's on that, again, parcel to the north, onto this 5.57 acre parcel. And the reason for, even though they count, this property is outside the city limits in the county, it's still inside our urban growth boundary, so that's the reason why the plan map amendment is coming to the city of Monmouth, because our comprehensive plan, city of Monmouth Comprehensive Plan applies to all properties inside the urban growth This type of an application is what we call a Type III land use action, quasi-judicial, in which the council will make the final decision for the city, and that is appealable to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Council's decision must be based on the approval criteria that are summarized on the screen before you. I'm gonna go through some of the high-level points of the staff report of how the application meets those criteria, and then certainly can answer more detailed questions if you may have them. The first criteria relates to if there's been any changes in the neighborhood conditions. And actually, there are three, three different criteria that you can select. The applicant in this case shows that there's been a change in neighborhood conditions that necessitates the request to change the plan map designation from low-density residential to industrial. And kind of the primary driver behind that change in neighborhood conditions that's happened on this parcel is a recent rezone on the Mar Brothers property that was changed from residential to industrial. So now, this property that's being asked for the change this evening actually has industrial to the north, and it also has industrial across Pacific Highway 99W, and then you've got, this property forms the border with the southern urban growth boundary, so it's the last parcel, it's kind of the skinny strip of lands between the Monmouth Urban Growth Boundary and industrial land. So that change in comprehensive plan map designation was done in 2013, really serves as that, what started to transition or change this particular area to more of an industrial The second criteria looks at whether or not the change is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan has a number of goals and policies in it, the ones that are directly most applicable to this change, apply to land use and economic developments, and this proposed change is consistent with the city's economic development goals to both maintain and expand an existing industrial business within our urban growth boundary that also provides employment opportunities for city residents. In terms of the housing policies, we need to look kind of at both sides, what they're requesting to the industrial zone change, or excuse me, to industrial plan change, and also what their, the area that would be taken out of our, our plan map designation, the residential. The impact to our residential land supply is minimal. This is a five-and-a-half acre parcel, and according to our most current comprehensive plan, we have sufficient low-density residential land inside the UGB. The third criteria looks at whether or not there's adequate public facilities, services, and transportation to serve the developments. At this time, the property is served with adequate public facilities. There are no proposed buildings at this time, so they have all of the utilities that they need. If and when the property goes to annex and put buildings on it, then it will be required to hook up to all the city services that go along with that, and the annexation process will help ensure that. The city did receive comments from the Oregon Department of Transportation since a property of butts, highway, estate highway 99W. ODOT noted that the applicant is going through the process of getting access approval for this subject property to make sure that it can utilize the existing driveways, so the applicant initiated that process with ODOTs. ODOT didn't express any objections to this particular case, but just wanted to note that the property owner does have to complete that process to make sure that the property has adequate access to the state highway. Then the fourth criteria looks at whether or not the proposed change is appropriate given the surrounding land uses and development patterns. As I mentioned earlier, there has been a recent plan amendment change from residential to industrial on the Mar Brothers property to the north of here that was done in 2013. And so the property's now currently predominantly surrounded by industrial use, so it would be consistent with that. Also, this property has frontage on a state highway which is highly desirable for commercial and industrial uses, less desirable for residential uses because of the noise and the traffic, so making this change does appear to be logical with the current land use pattern that's in this area. So in summary, the findings in the staff report do show how all these criteria can be met. The Planning Commission had a hearing on December 6th, and they unanimously recommended that the council approve the proposed plan map amendment from low-density residential to industrial, consistent with the findings in the staff report, and subject to one condition. So there was one condition that's recommended to be placed on the proposed change, and it's the same condition. Those actually apply to the plan map change on the parcel to the north that was done in 2013. And that condition's that prior to any new development on the property requiring issuance of a building permit, that the owners shall annex the subject property to the city of Monmouth. And we want to make sure that condition's on there, so we, if any new, if any buildings go onto that property, we can make sure that development is consistent with our transportation plans and our utility plans as well. So we're recommending that that condition be placed on the application. And in terms of additional written testimony, we did receive comments from a number of the utility providers, I mentioned ODOT specifically, those are attached to the staff report. The county also commented. And then the city received one written comment letter from Eric Golson, the adjacent property owner on the property to the east. He had a concern regarding the future extension of what's referred to as Ash Creek Drive in our transportation plan through this property, and how this development would take that into account and plan for that. So I believe by having that condition, that the property be annexed prior to any development on the property, we'll be able to evaluate any future placement of buildings to make sure that they wouldn't preclude that road from being built consistent with our transportation plans. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Turn over to the applicant.
I have a quick question, if you will. The property to the north was rezoned as light industrial?
Yes, there was both a plan map amendment with the city of Monmouth that came before the council, I believe, in 2012. And then the applicant went on to the county to change the zoning to be consistent with that new plan map designation.
Light industrial, and this is a request to rezone as industrial?
This is a request to change our Monmouth Comprehensive Plan Map to industrial, correct?
Could you give me just a brief idea of the difference between light industrial and industrial? And kinds of activities that would be allowed on one and not the other?
Yeah, so, well, just to clarify, so the plan map designation is proposed for industrial, so we're not.
The light industrial is a county zoning designation?
Yeah.
Our plan map designation is just industrial, and that's the same as the 2012 application.
Okay, so ultimately, if this property is sold and it's zoned industrial, can you give us an idea of if the family or the business is no longer using that property for processing firewood? What other kinds of activities could be done if it's zoned industrial? I mean, could you bring in a tannery or a battery plant?
Are you talking under the current county light industrial zone? I'd have to pull a copy of there.
Well, this is a request to rezone this as industrial under the city of Monmouth, the comprehensive plan?
And we have two separate designations. We have the comprehensive plan map, which is the, you know, the overarching 20-year plan for properties that applies to all properties inside Monmouth Urban Growth Boundary. And then there's an actual zone designation that's separate from the plan map designation that implements that map designation. So right now, we're just looking at the plan map designation, because the property's still in the county.
And if I can help just, maybe, I'm not conversant in all of the uses that are covered under the county zoning designation of light industrial. I would say probably a tannery would not be light industrial. But we do have in this application the stated intention of the applicants upon approval here, if the council approves, to seek a zone change under the county designation to light industrial, not, not the heavy industrial. It may be, it'd be a fair question to council for the applicant, when he comes up. Certainly, we'll have the opportunity to comment on a county zone change, and I will say that, and this will happen, we have history with council and with the party. If they were to come into the county and ask for a different zoning designation than what they have represented in their application to us, we would comment on that as being a change in the representations that were made to us, and on which basis the industrial designation was provided. So here, they've made the commitment that they will be applying for light industrial zoning designation at the county. You can ask council to confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
So Howard, we'll hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Molly Lean, I'm a land use lawyer. I represent Jim and Penny Mar. My address is Post Office, Box 5730, Salem 97304. I don't have much to say. We have worked with staff over the last year to put the best face on the application we can. We presented it to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission agreed that this was the appropriate change. It is a complicated process that really shouldn't be complicated. Suzanne, if you could go back to the map. The prior zone change on plan map was this property here. It added that and left that in the residential. This is the property that's involved here. The urban growth boundary comes along this line, so there's just this little strip, a couple hundred feet wide, that is inside the urban growth boundary and represents the last, really, piece of industrial land in this area. So the idea is the log storage is on this property, and then to use this property for additional storage and bark storage. And it will be light industrial. The county has a tendency to do a resolution of intent that basically says, if you change the use, then you have to come back. the use, then you have to come back and go through that process again. So what we have for you today is the comprehensive plan amendment for these two properties. Then after we get done with that process, then we go to Pope County. We make an application to modify those two properties to be light industrial. Then we're not, still not done. We have this property line that needs to go away, and so it is going to basically fold over in a lot line adjustment, which also will be with the county, so that this will ultimately be one parcel. In that lot line adjustment process, that's when ODOT comes into play. And we've been working with ODOT for the last nine or 10 months. And the entrance has approved the grant of access is at this corner. And during the planning of the lot line adjustment here, ODOT's going to require an easement along the northern boundary of this property so that there's fully complete access to those properties. So it's a bunch of staged processes that we have to go through to accomplish the end Unlike prior cases we've had in front of you, that one's pretty contentious, this one is pretty straightforward. There's really not much to it. It's the most uncomplicated comprehensive plan amendment that you'll get. And ultimately, within the next six to nine months, we'll have the zone changed and the lot line adjustment and the ODOT access, and then they can open up their business. So I would answer any questions that you might have.
I would ask one. You indicated that that line that divides, what, 401 and that portion 300?
Yeah.
So that has to go away? Why does that have to go away?
Well, Tax Lot 300 has a different ODOT access that comes way to the south, actually off that map. And so in order to work out the ODOT access for that parcel, ODOT requires that to be one parcel and not two.
Got you, okay, sure. I have another question. The application says that that parcel will be used for storing and processing firewood? Can you tell us a little bit about what processing is?
Well, they have, they have a machine that the logs come in, and at this point, the Tax Lot 400 is only a storage deck. And the processing is actually on Tax Lot 100, which is in the north. And they have a machine, and they pick up the logs, and the conveyor chops them up and then splits them, and then they come off of a conveyor belt into one of those tents where the workers wrap it up and get it set up for shipment. It's really a fascinating process to watch them do that. There is the possibility, if that business grows, that there may be processing. Another machine, for example, might actually be placed on the new property, but that's not anticipated at this point in time. And then the back part is anticipated for just additional storage for the bark.
Okay, do you have, do you have any ideas about how much noise this processing makes? Has anybody ever, like, measured it?
Well, they have to be permitted through DEQ, and one of the permits they have is a noise permit, and they're monitored regularly by the state, and they've never had a violation.
Well, the DEQ noise standards have to do with the potential to cause hearing loss, and that's based on decibels and the amount of time you're exposed. Nuisance noise, there are no regulations for nuisance noise, so I'm just, while I would love to have that property to the east of this remain agricultural, eventually there'll be houses there. And do you anticipate that the people who live there would have any say in when this noise begins and ends each day?
Well, I can tell you that the last time we had one of these processes, many of the neighbors from Edwards Edition called repeatedly to the state and made complaints about noise and dust and all those things, and every one of their complaints was found to be not valid by the state. So I'm assuming that...
Well, the noise standards, again, have nothing to do with nuisance noise. They, I mean, the kind of noise that wakes you up at seven o'clock in the morning and you want to sleep in on a Saturday. The DEQ standards have to do with whether or not the noise can damage hearing. They're based on occupation standards. That is, a person exposed to 85 decibels over the course of eight hours can have hearing loss, hearing damage, and that's a violation of the DEQ standards. But there's nothing really that would prevent, legally prevent, an industrial operation that's producing sort of a buzzsaw operation 20 hours a day. Nobody could stop that. So what I'm asking is, is there any way that the people who will be living in those houses there can have some peace of mind, some time to sleep, and, or will this operation be going on?
Well, there are no houses.
Not yet.
Well, there won't be, because the property is going to be changed to industrial. It's only the property to the east that's slashed, which is Olson Edition.
Yes, exactly, that's what I mean.
Yeah, and that is thousands some odd feet away from where the processing...
Exactly.
...of the logs are.
I think that's Phase Eight or Phase Nine of Edwards Edition, and ultimately, there will be houses there. So there's no way of knowing whether the people who live in those houses would ever be able to say, gee, I'd really like to not have any processing of firewood between, say, seven o'clock at night and seven o'clock in the morning? Or that wouldn't ever be able to happen?
If, if somebody had that concern when we go to Pope County for the zone change, because this is just comprehensive planning that we're doing now, we go to the county, then we're doing zoning, which allows different uses, and the county can put all kinds of conditions, and if somebody has a concern about that, they could appear at the Pope County hearing, raise those issues, and see what Pope County has to say about it.
Okay, so ultimately, before this body, there's nothing that can be done to provide some sort of relief from the noise for the people who will be living in that residential area sometimes?
Well, yeah, I think that's exactly right. Our scope today is the comprehensive plan, but I would not admit at all that the applicant generates noise that would have any adverse effect on the people that will be building in Edwards Edition. I've been out there, I've listened to it, operated, and there's just no way there's going to be an adverse impact to that. But that's up to Pope County. If Pope County says, you know, you've got limited hours of operation, or you have to keep your decibel levels below, the county will do that.
So I need to bring us kind of back...
All right, thank you very much.
...into the, back into the order that we were going to go down the chart. So do we, do we have any more information that you want to provide?
The only, the only other thing is, you guys will remember, one of the compromises that everybody reached in that 2011 case was that annexation condition. And that annexation condition now applies to all of Tax Lot 100, and the city has proposed that both Tax Lot 400 and this part of 300 will have that same condition. And that only makes sense, and we have no, no problem with that and agree that it should be added to the approval. Thank you.
So then, at this time, we have persons in favor, correct?
Yep, that's right.
Anyone want to speak in favor of this? Seeing none, are there any persons in opposition who want to speak? Seeing none, so persons, what is fine?
For him, just with, requesting information?
Yeah, questions?
Neither for or against, just asking questions or information?
So is there anyone's for or against who has a question that they want answered? All right, hearing none. I guess there's no reason for rebuttal by the applicant. So this would be questions of the counselors? Any further questions? Did you have some?
I had one.
Okay.
Olson Edition, Olson wrote a letter that said that this would hamper his extension down the road of his expansion of the property of a road. Well, this piece that's coming in allows no building, so I don't see how that has any...
That was, that's why the condition is there.
Right.
Yeah, that's the purpose of the condition.
Right, there is no building, so it's still going to be an open property in the last 20 years down the road to change it, so that's it.
And then as soon as it's... Then we'd look at the alignment of structures to make sure they don't interfere with road lanes.
Yep, yep.
John?
A little bit on that same, on that same deal, Mr. Olson did note the, well, he noted that he was not in opposition to the amendment. He did note that he had some concerns about the long-term extension of, and it's, you know, it's one of these long deals, but I can't find it all, but, but relative to the extension of Ash Creek Way or something like that, and I saw no reference to any of that in our materials. And there was, so it's hard to comment on that or to plug that in. There was no real reference to it that I could see on any map. Did I miss it?
No.
In other words, I, that's my first question, did I miss it?
Yeah. We did have a criteria that talks about the adequate transportation facility, so it didn't specifically call out Ash Creek Drive because we're not proposing that specific alignment with this plan amendment. So it was a comment that Mr. Olson made through the planning commission process that I believe was addressed, but I also spoke with him verbally on the phone about the condition to annex before building permits would have proven specific, site-specific development on this property, and that would give the opportunity for the city to coordinate where does that road alignment go with, with the applicant. So it's just, it's, the specific alignment of the road is not what's being approved with this plan amendment.
Well, I understand that, I understand that. But, but he referenced that as an issue, and, and, you know, I was looking, and we had plenty of maps, and I couldn't find that extension of that because, you know, does the plan of the extension of that run through this property? Does it go through, does it run north of that? Does it run through Tax Lot 1000?
Sure.
I just had no sense of that. And then, what's the big deal about the building exclusion if, if, if that doesn't, if it doesn't run through there?
Yeah, let me show you on the map.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so the transportation system plan shows Ash Creek Drive and a general alignment going through, like, the top of this property. It is conceptual in nature. It hasn't had a feasibility study done on each parcel or even approval from ODOT on where that road comes out. The city has to apply for a road approach to get a new road access to a state highway. It's just meant to illustrate, we need a road going east-west in this general location. Now, Mr. Olson has done planning for future Edwards Edition that does show road alignments in it, and his map actually has the road curving down and stubbing into this property about this location along the South River line. So again, there's been some planning to shift that. This hasn't had its subdivision phase approval yet, so there's been a general plan effort done to show that how that connectivity can be provided, but it, but it hasn't gone through the subdivision approval, so they can start building on the houses on that lots. And we don't know when exactly Mr. Olson will apply for that, but to some extent, yeah, this, you know, depends on which property develops kind of first that, you know, ultimately we need them, obviously, to match up and to also meet ODOT's spacing standards for access. So that's, that's kind of a discussion for, for future, they, you know, we're not going to resolve that here. So I apologize if I wasn't clear in the staff report.
His, his proposed alignment and the outlets that he refers to are really on his map, they're not on a city-adopted plan.
Ah, okay.
We know generally that it's going through there, but the course of it has not been laid out.
Okay. And, and that's the reason, then, that by the building exclusion...
Right.
Yeah.
That way, that would force that issue?
Yes, so we know we're not building, putting buildings in the place of where a place we would want to build a street.
Right. And I'm naive on this, but, but if we decided we wanted to build a street through that property, how would we access that property? How would we, I mean, is that an eminent domain deal, or how do we, how does someone gain the right to build a road through a business?
In the scenario that the, that property owner is not doing development themselves, because most times roads get built when there's new development. So if subdivision going in, they need that road for access. There's a new industrial building, a complex going in, they need it for access. So that's typically how those new roads get built.
And you can impose the requirement as a condition of development?
Of the...
Of the road length?
Of the road length.
Yeah.
Right. If, if, well, never mind, because it's sort of out there, but there, I've got a couple more that are, I don't know if they're any more germane or not. In the subject property, the 5.6 or 5.7 acres, what is this lot size, you know, the zoned low-density residential? What are the lot sizes on that?
What's the minimum lot size in the low-density residential? 5,000 square feet.
How many, you know, I didn't do the math on that. How many lots, even if it could be developed, are we talking about missing out on?
I'd have to do that calculation. Generally, you take out about 25% of the lot for roads, infrastructure, and then what's left over.
So not much?
Yeah.
Not, not much. So we're not losing a lot of housing opportunities, I guess.
Right, the other thing you consider is its, its parcel shape or configuration. It's only 200, 200 feet wide, so by the time you get a 60-foot wide right of way in there in lot depths, there's not a lot of room, you know, left over to put...
Now, what, is there anything that would preclude extending that industrial zone, not to this group, but the, but the county, extending that industrial zone down into Lot, Tax Lot 300?
Right now, yeah, it's the urban growth boundary, we'd have to...
I know, it's outside of it, but it's in the county, not from the county. Could Mr. Lee make the pitch? The county did like 19 acres of industrial land there?
My understanding, the state laws would have, they'd have to come through Monmouth and actually Pope County. It's a joint approval process to move the urban growth boundary, to expand it, but it's, if it's exclusive farmland land, which is, my understanding is what it is outside of that Monmouth Urban Growth Boundary, to change that to more of an industrial use, then it wouldn't even come into our...
The whole big process?
Yeah.
So that's unlikely.
That's right.
That's future, yeah. Big, big, big change, take a look at that.
Okay, and so the, the, last question, the prohibition on the, well, I shouldn't say that, the condition that would cause the applicant to seek annexation would be triggered by development that would require a building permit?
Correct.
And what, we're just doing that as, as a protection against possible, you know, transportation needs, so we just have a hand, have a discussion?
Right, or make sure our utilities are coordinated so that that property, when it's annexed, you know, it can be developed to its full potential most efficiently, yeah.
And that's the same condition as was on the 2012?
Yeah, I recall.
Yep.
Any other questions? So then, at this point, I'm going to close the hearing, and I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment 17-01, as recommended by, do we need that? As recommended by the planning commission and as presented in the staff report, including the findings of fact and subject of the follow, to the subject of the following condition, prior to any new development on the property requiring issuance of a building permit, the owner shall...
on the property requiring issuance of a building permit, the owner shall annex the entirety of the subject property to the City of Mon.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? And is this one you want a roll call?
No, you can, voice vote will be fine, you'll have an ordinance, assuming it passes, you'll have an ordinance, and there'll be a roll call vote on the ordinance.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the passage is unanimous, thank you. Thank you. And that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is a resolution providing for 20 mile-an-hour speed limit on portions of Church Street and Stadium Drive.
Thank you, Mayor Milligan, and members of council. What I have brought before you tonight is a resolution that would change portions of North Stadium Drive and Church Street West from its current posted speed at 25 miles per hour down to 20 miles per hour. This was triggered by a request from Western Oregon University for the city to consider those speed limit changes. Upon receiving that request, it was taken to the Traffic Safety Commission at their December meeting. The Traffic Safety Commission heard both from the university and discussed among themselves about it and recommended bringing a resolution to council for their consideration for that. Discussion items that I think are important to consider on this is, safety was the primary concern that was brought up both by the Traffic Safety Commission and the university, as well as just some consistency with posted speeds when the university is on both sides of a roadway. Both of these streets, portions of streets are collectors in the city's transportation system plan, just meaning that they are designed to carry higher volumes of traffic. I noted in the staff report that the stadium, North Stadium, was constructed as a way to move traffic around campus instead of allowing that traffic that's coming into town on Little Road to go directly through campus, and so we just want to make sure that we keep in mind that we want to continue to encourage that movement, and so placing too many barriers along there may discourage use of that, but that, what was not necessarily a concern of the Traffic Safety Commission, just something that felt was important to bring to your attention. Financial considerations is primarily just installing signs that would post a new speed if that is the direction that council takes with this. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well?
Well, you started already on Jackson to Church. I mean, that was an arterial, it was pretty well open, and the farmers used it. Now that parking's on both sides of it, you couldn't get a farmer down there if you wanted to. So you've really restricted flow from that point to Jackson, I mean, as being an arterial is what I'm trying to say. It's not going to go the other way, which are wide streets and very open. I don't see anything against 20, but I'm just saying, you've already shrunk it down to where it can't be an arterial because the part from Church to Jackson is so restricted, and that three-block area in there, that you couldn't get anything down there, not even a truck if you wanted to, without hitting a car or hitting something. I'm just saying, you've already squeezed it together already.
Is there, to your point about, you know, diverting traffic around campus, is there anticipated impact on that, or with the reduced speed limit there, or is that...
I don't believe so. Kind of some of the backstory to this is that stretch of Stadium Drive, when constructed by the university, was constructed on their property in an easement, and they had put up 20 mile-an-hour signs on their own at that time. And so that stretch of roadway has been posted 20 miles an hour for as long as it's been there. It hasn't had an ordinance with it that would allow enforcement of that speed. So what this ordinance does is ratify a speed limit that really has been there all along. That's not the same with Church Street, though. Church Street, that would be, that would be a new, it hasn't been posted, and therefore it would be considered 25 mile-an-hour as a local street.
Other questions? Do you have a motion on this?
This is ready for a resolution.
Oh, resolution is 1855.
Move that Monmouth City Council adopted Resolution 1855 establishing portions of Church Street West and Stadium Drive North with 20 miles per hour speed zones.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call to you, Phil.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Sharma?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Shinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Yes.
All right, the passage is unanimous, thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
And next, we're going to look at a resolution establishing an HRA/ VVA plan.
Mr. Mayor and councilors, this is better known as a VIVA HRA, and the staff report details that, as you're well aware, the city employees are now looking at a different set of health plans than they've had prior. The old ones basically went away, they were cost prohibitive to the providers, and so now we're looking at a high deductible plan, which is more typical and more prevalent throughout industry and the public sector. Typically, what we see coming with those higher deductible plans is a way to help defray those costs through either an HRA or an HSA, we're looking at, which are Health Reimbursement Account or Health Savings Account. We're looking at the Health Reimbursement Account with VIVA, which is spelled out in here, because they work commonly with CIS, they've been around for a long time, it's very low cost to us as a public entity, and it gives the employees a very nice benefit that will hopefully help ease the pain of the high deductible plans. The staff report goes into more detail, I'm willing to take questions. The resolution proposes that we move ahead with doing those, that form of plan effective upon the resolution being decided with the non-represented employees. We have not yet reached agreement with the two unions, and once we do, though, we would like to proceed as well with them if they are willing to do that.
All right, and this will be Resolution 1856. Anyone have any questions?
Many, I do. So, how you framed up the benefit plan, pardon the expression, but it just seems like we're Robin Peter to pay Paul here. So the increased cost to the employee is then offset by a windfall, if you will, in the form of this VIVA plan. So how is that beneficial to, A, the city, because, you know, part of the changing landscape of health insurance and things like that are these high deductible plans? But typically, that's essentially eaten by the employee. The employee has the increased cost of the high deductible, not the employer, or not the whatever entity's paying that. So I guess my question is, why are we simply shifting money around to do this plan? And then, secondly, is it wise to do this prior to going into negotiations when essentially doing this here, at least seemingly entitles the representative employees, coworkers, to a similar, if not more, rich benefit?
Yeah, so I can answer that. So the basic idea is our standard we're working with is we actually have to keep the employees whole what the original plan was. In this case, we actually don't have an option to just go to a higher plan, you know, save money and just leave it there. Per statute, we actually have to, in both cases, actually negotiating with both unions to actually get back to a roughly equivalent plan. So essentially, the VIVA is the mechanism that gets us back to an equivalent plan.
So there's a statute that says that we can't cut benefits?
Mm-hmm. Yep, actually, in the contracts, they read if you change any plan, different language, but essentially the words equivalent, equal, equal or better are in the contract.
You're referring there to the collective bargaining?
Collective bargaining, yes, so we're actually...
No, not a statute, it's in the collective bargaining.
It's only what you need.
Collective bargaining units based on state statutes.
That's right.
So yes, these are actually requirements that we have to meet. So if we tried to do anything differently, they would go whatever mechanism to file agreements, take us to an arbitration, we would lose greatly, wouldn't even be close. So we're already basically boxed in before we even start the discussion.
I should say so.
Yeah, so what this does is it gets us to a mechanism that provides that offset. We still, I think like we talked before, we'll still have some savings, certainly not, you're absolutely right, this is a backfill mechanism. You take savings out of plan, you backfill it. A different perspective is we obviously want to stay competitive in the market. If we were an outlier of having much of a plan, everybody else has got a lot better plans, that would hurt our ability to recruit employees too. And then as far as the timing goes, the mechanism's there, we would like to be able to move with like the non-reps fairly quickly. Catastrophic, can't see it happening, but if everything just imploded with the unions, we just deactivate this account. It would harm nothing.
Say that again, please.
Oh, okay, I have full assurance that we will have a VIVA, that's the direction we're going with our unions, and then we'd apply the same to the non-reps. And for some reason, it all changed, and both unions said, we don't want a VIVA, we'd want to do something different, you know, and this is just, we're set up with this company, we would essentially say, hey, sorry, we signed up, but we don't really need your account anymore, so we would just close it and never put anybody into it.
Well, is that part of the resolution, that we'll welsh on the deal if the, you know, if we can't settle with the unions?
The staff report actually talks about the fact of the timing, that we're not necessarily going to fund the accounts until we have, until we've arrived at what the appropriate amounts would be.
Yeah, okay. So you're not going to fund the non-represented until the CBA is ratified and all taken?
Yeah, we use it as a benchmark for getting to the non-rep. Maybe, it's probably not the best analogy, but maybe think you got like pre-qualified for a home loan?
Right.
But then you don't actually have everything to use it.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. I guess I don't understand how this works. The member participants pay $1.50 a month, so if they're paid bi-weekly, they pay 75 cents, would each pay to it?
So all of the fees are deducted from the earnings on their account, so it doesn't start until they have funds available, and then it gets deducted from their earnings, from their earnings on their accounts.
And the funds come from where?
The funds are put in, into their accounts by the employer, by the city.
By the city, okay. So what's this $1.50?
The $1.50 is just a monthly charge, that's how VIVA makes their money, is they get administrative costs covered by the earnings that are on the accounts.
And we have no way of knowing then, the amount to be funded remains to be determined, we have no way of knowing what that would be? We have to wait for the union negotiations to be...
Yeah, at this point, we don't have a set dollar.
Okay, so what if, what if, say, there's a non-represented employee here working for the city who tomorrow was in a car crash on the way to work, and they have catastrophic medical expenses? Are they in jeopardy of not being covered by their insurance if that happens?
Yeah, a couple different things, yeah, timing's important. Now, what we're looking at doing is doing quarterly installments, so let's even say right now we were, are already up and running, and on January, when we put in their quarterly payment. If you had an incident happen that was way above that quarterly enough, yes, the employee actually has to cover that. The intriguing one, there's somewhat of a cash flow issue, is that as we recharge it every quarter, they could then take slices of that, you know, over time, they could actually get that done. In our case administratively, it's interesting, is that we could actually have somebody right now, since it isn't set up, and let's say something happened, we load the money in February, that might cover what happened to the person in January. But definitely it's a reimbursement account, and you're onto the crept in, Counselor Sharma's, it's a reimbursement, so if there's not enough money there, yeah, you're covering that on the front end, and then use these things as they come up.
And this is primarily to cover the deductible costs?
Yeah.
What are those deductible costs? Say somebody, we don't know.
Oh, just a benchmark.
Aren't they covered by insurance or them?
Yeah, Kaiser doesn't have deductible, it's a different structured plan.
Okay, so employees can have different plans?
Yeah, and then regents, to give you an idea, which is a Blue Cross plan, if you're a family, you'd have a $1,500 deductible.
$1,500 deductible, so, and that's through the year?
Yeah. Right, so in that case, if you had $1,500 out of the gate, then you'd be doing that, and then you'd have to wait until the VIVA account had enough money to kind of reimburse you for that $1,500.
That's the maximum money on a real...
There's also a maximum out-of-pocket, which is higher than that.
Yeah, it's 550.
Yeah, I think we're 55, yeah, on that, on that point.
So the city pays for, contributes to this VIVA account that will cover the high deductible on the employee's regular insurance program? So ultimately, the employee could be paid nothing at all for their medical care, is that right?
Potentially, yeah. At the moment, we've always had a deductible, we always had a maximum out-of-pocket with the VIVA mechanism, yeah, that actually, if you keep it below, in this case, $1,500, then you're going to be in good shape.
But ultimately, it depends on the size of the VIVA as well, so there is a maximum amount annually that you're going to get, but again, you also, with an HRA, you can accumulate it if you don't need it or use it.
And we, but we don't know what that is, Jim.
We don't.
Is there any way to just, I hate the font of leaving employees in the lurch here, but is there any way that we could have any idea what this amount to be determined is going to be?
Unfortunately, we need to talk about the exact...
It's like a blank check.
Yeah, and in our case, and just remember, the employee's always been on, like, well, the case of the regent's family, it's always been 900, so the employee's always had the first 900, you know, at that level if you're a family. So there's always been, that's just the structure of basic health plans, and you've always had a maximum out-of-pocket or something happened.
So that's the deductible that they have to pay. How much are the insurance premiums that each employee pays?
Very little.
Very little?
It's very little, right.
Okay, zero?
Pretty close.
Is it zero? Okay.
Average is about 1.4%.
Boy, you know, I have a lot of neighbors who are on Medicare, and they pay $127 a month for their Medicare premium, and then their part B, and then you come to us and say, you want us to pay the medical care expenses for employees who work here, who, I mean, the people who are paying those Medicare premiums are paying the salaries of the people who are getting these, it seems like a pretty fancy deal to me.
Company workers have good benefits.
It doesn't seem fair to me. I guess that's it.
Any further questions? Again, this is Resolution 1856. Looking for a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 1856 authorizing the establishment of VIVA HRA plans under the city employees as specified herein.
That's seconded. And any further questions, discussion?
What happens if we don't approve this today, Scott?
If you don't approve this today, we couldn't establish an account, and then more than likely, then we just have a lag. What I would hope of, if you said no tonight, then when everything got wrapped up, we had all the dollar figures, then we can come back to you again and ask to set up a... we had all the dollar figures, then we can come back to you again and ask to set up the account. You just have a lag built in. Because let's just say we get done tomorrow, then we'd have to wait till the next council meeting to get things set up and going. So all we're trying to do is just, to streamline and get, get going a little bit faster on this.
Well?
Well, the motion, I mean, I get, I'm, I'm trying to, this, this council approves a VIVA for non-representative employees, so that is only for the non-represented. No, but, because it was all of it, it was one, two, and three. So if the union comes in, they still have to come back, and we have to, we have to approve this if the union comes back for them.
Well, no, we do have the...
Word.
I don't think there's a negotiation going on.
I think this just establishes the account.
Right. So, so I see what you're saying, Ron. The, 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 the way that the staff memo is worded is not as clear as the resolution. The resolution says that it allows for the setup of all employees, but they're, but basically, what we're planning and able to do at this point is only the non-represented employees. And so we have the, the three options in the staff memo that, that are saying that our plan would be to have the, the non-represented be effective. Basically, if the resolution passes, they would, it would be effective today that they, that their plan goes into effect. There wouldn't be any funding until an amount is established. But we are hoping that this will allow for us to add the, not, the other employees as they agree to the, to a VIVA.
Ken, Elaine, you can chime in here. Would it be possible to, to subject any funding of these VIVAs to council approval, saying before we approve an amount, that has to come before us to, to fund that? I mean, I mean, I like the idea of, of, you know, if this is the direction we're headed, let's go ahead and get the accounts open, but, but to give, to Laurel's point, to just say, an indeterminate amount, I, I think it makes me a little bit...
Yeah, and I can say from a purely practical standpoint, there's no way ever, anytime, that I would just throw a dollar amount in there. I can't. I will not do anything until I can give a direction from the council. I can provide you that verbal assurance here. It's on the record. If you need something more, I guess we could try to craft something. But no, we will not be putting a nickel in there until the council authorizes something.
And, and that would be, and, and we would be able to make that determination after such time that the contract, uh, contract's been ratified in the two years. Yeah. So, so, you know, I mean, I, I too am concerned with the, with the sort of indeterminate amount, but, but given how, you know, I, I, I think given the negotiations that are going to occur, it needs to be that. I, I mean, I would hope that this isn't any richer than what, you know, is, I mean, I'm not gonna vote for anything for the non-reps that is richer than, than the, the represented employees. So that, and so I think that's our means by which to control that, nor would I be inclined to go any less than that for the non-reps. So I think the control, it really is, is with the negotiation.
So clarifying question. So this statute is, that statute that talks about the renewal, maintenance of, of benefits applies to both represented and non-represented?
Just, just, I mean, yeah.
Any further questions? Roll call, please, Phil.
Counselor Schinkel?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Sharmer?
No.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
And that motion passes three to two. Moving on to, thank you. Moving on to council comments. Any councilors have any?
I'd just like to acknowledge Marilyn Morton, uh, from City of Independence, councillor, here. She sat through all this, and glad to have you, Marilyn.
Any other comments? All right, at this time, I'm gonna read the script for the executive session. What we're gonna do is, we'll recess this meeting, so we can go to the work session. When we're done with the work session, then we'll come back into the regular session and then move into executive session. So when I read the part about that you need to leave the room, that won't happen till later, until we reconvene council meeting after the work session. So, um, January second, twenty eighteen, the city council will now meet an executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiator consultations and performance evaluation of public officers and employees. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192 dot six-six-zero-two-D, Labor Negotiator Consultations, and ORS 192 dot six-six-zero-two-I, Performance Evaluation of Public Officers and Employees, which allows the council to meet an executive session. Designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session. I welcome the audience back into the room. As is not anticipated, an action will be taken this evening after returning from executive session. So I have a motion to recess.
Make the motion to recess.
Uh, seconded to recess. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll, we can meet the faculty.